So I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Go over, I guess, a couple of rules, and since this is our first meeting, using Zoom as a vehicle for holding the meeting. So I'm the, will be the chair, the host on the Zoom, it's gonna be.
We'll do that in a minute. Okay. Go ahead. No, it's fine. We'll just move it when he starts his stuff.
Will be Diane. If we're, if you're speaking, does that, is that gonna show somebody's name when they speak?
No, when, when the commissioner speaks, they should identify.
You should identify your name before you speak. So we can know who is making any statements. I guess we have, all the commissioners and staff will be listed as panelists. We have nobody in the public. They're just, what, attendees? They're listed, the public would be listed as attendees. So Diane will control who's gonna be called on. So we'll have to have a more formal participation. People will have to raise their hand to be notice, to be called on before they speak. So we'll try to, which isn't too much different than what we normally conduct the meetings, but it will be a little more formal. When we vote on a motion, we'll call a vote. And for those people who wanna vote in, call whether it's for or against or abstain. Just click the raise hand button and we can record that. We don't have to have the names recorded except as a minority. So we don't have to go through one by one asking a question. We have anything else? I guess since we had no attendees, we had no public.
No, we will, we do have attendees.
Oh, we do have attendees?
Yes, we have three attendees.
Okay, so for the, the attendees will be allowed to speak during public communications. If you like to speak, raise your hand and we'll call on you in the order that your hands are raised. So I didn't know that we had any.
John Reiner, Director, Planning and Development Services. So each time before any of us speak at any point in time, we should always say our name again. Once we get to the presentation, we'll slide, for people that are watching this, not here, we will slide the pan that has the pictures of people on it off of the screen. And we will see only the PowerPoint presentation that Jeff Davis from Horstley Witten will give to the group. And we'll have that up as the main slide point. Thank you.
So our, so we have the roll call. Everybody's here, but Sue?
So we have, for participants, we have Kevin Fitfall, Barbara Tarbox, Halzad, Michael Kane, Steve Hudicek, and Jeff Pritchard. We do not have Sue Sutherland right now, so you would ask.
So I will appoint, I will appoint Steve Hudicek to sit for Sue until Sue arrives. And she said she's gonna drive up to the meeting. And then, once Sue's here, she will be the acting, is she here now?
Yeah.
So she will then sit in as the fifth member of the commission, voting member. Next item is approval of minutes of March 10th. I'll move to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Somebody wanna raise their hand and second?
Raise your hand and second.
Does anybody wanna raise their hand and second the minutes?
Second the motion to the minutes.
Michael Kane, too.
Michael Kane did.
Yep.
Does anyone have any corrections? If you do, raise your hand and we will recognize you.
Barbara Tarbox, you unmuted yourself. Do you have a comment? Or no?
She's not unmuted.
Nobody has any comments on the minute?
I have one comment. Under the attendance of the meeting. Can we differentiate between the regular members and the alternates? So it's obvious who's voting. This is in the members present. And it's really an alternate member who's absent. I mean, you could go up and look at the beginning of them, but I think normally it would be easier to just indicate. Next item is public communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications? If you do, raise your hand. Do we have any?
We have, we.
Well, I have.
Yeah, we received one communication. You're gonna do that? Very good.
Well, I was gonna. If no one else has one, I've received a communication from Roseanne Potowski, which I believe has been sent out to everybody for comments to the proposed regulations, which should be for a future review. We also received a letter from the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning, delaying their annual meeting to April 30th. And how to apply to attend a meeting, if anyone is interested in applying. The staff have any?
Deb Jones, I just wanna follow up on the email that everyone received. The Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B allows for the public to submit testimony before a meeting. They suggest it be 24 hours if possible. And that that information be posted on the town's website. So when we did receive, we also received a copy of it and we attached it to the agenda that is on the town's website. So it'll, it will be there before, during, and after the meeting.
Anything else? Well, everybody got a copy.
Yeah, everyone has a copy.
For the public, if anyone on the public wishes to address us tonight, raise your hand and we will recognize you.
They're not showing up on here. They would have to, in order to acknowledge you and speak, you would have to raise your hand on your computer.
So if you have, if you're working off of a laptop or desktop, hover your mouse down at the bottom of the screen. You will see Participants. Click on that. When you click on that, you will see a button that says Raise Hand. If you are on a smartphone or an iPad, again, hover at the bottom of your screen and click More. And one of the choices there will be Raise Hand. Deb Jones, sorry.
I don't see anybody that's raising their hand at this point for the attendees.
But the public can submit written comments to us, which we will consider before taking action on the proposals. Site plans, Central Hall Carport, that's been postponed. So no discussion. Our elementary school rooftop, we have no input on that also, right? So the next item would be the historical institutional reuse floating zone regulation.
So I don't have to turn that.
So, Deb, you wanna?
So this, Deb Jones, this discussion follows up on the one that you had at the March 10 meeting, where we sought your input into developing a floating zone regulation. Jeff Davis is here tonight to, he has all of the input that you gave us at the last meeting. And he has some changes that he's made and some follow-up questions. So I would anticipate after tonight's meeting, he will take that information and draft to a first draft of a regulation for you to see, maybe at the next meeting, maybe two meetings from now. Deb, you on?
Right, yes. Can everyone hear me? Barely, you say. Okay, well, getting close, now speak loud.
Don't sleep out, we got you.
Got it? All right, awesome. So this is my first time doing this as well. Thanks for experimenting tonight. Hopefully this will be fun and effective. So as Deb said, taking all the feedback that we got from you at the March 10th meeting and have a few slides at the beginning, just to give you some more information. And then we will get to the remaining policy questions. There are certain things that were unresolved as of March 10th. And we will, we'll take some time, when we hit the slide with questions, we'll pause. And as, as Deb explained at the beginning, we'll take everyone's questions one by one until people are satisfied with that set of questions and then we'll, we'll move on. So with that, I wanted to start out with giving just a little bit more background on what a floating zone is. Hopefully you all have, have gotten a little better sense of this, so I won't, I won't spend too much time. But in brief, this is a zone that will create a specific zoning district, but it's not initially placed on the zoning map. So when you look at, if you pass this floating zone, it's not gonna be on the map anywhere. It's going to float until property owner requests and is approved for a zoning map amendment and master plan. And then, once that happens, once you approve a development, then it lands on a specific property. And the underlying zoning changes to the floating zone. Now, this is not something that, that Grotton has done before, but it is something that's been used throughout Connecticut, around New England, and has been recognized by the Supreme Court of Connecticut as a legal zoning tool since at least the 1960s. So some pros, some cons. There are the, the pros. This does allow you, as a body, to permit variety and the flexibility of uses beyond what the underlying zoning would allow. And also maintains your authority to guide proper development. So it provides that flexibility while maintaining your control as a body on the, on the future of, of your land use. The downside is more an image issue, a perception issue for people in the community. It can be viewed as unpredictable by the public if you don't know where it's going to land, what can it include. And it can also be viewed as favoring private developments or public interest. So has this been used in other communities in Connecticut? Yes, absolutely. There are successful examples all throughout the state. A lot of communities, the ones we've noted here, have used it for mixed use, where it would not otherwise be allowed, very similar to what you're contemplating. Stonington, right next door, has used it for Mystic Seaport and for agricultural preservation. So there are actually a number of ways that communities can use floating zones. Now, speaking of Stonington, you've probably all heard of a recent floating zone in Stonington that stirred up a lot of controversy. I think that is something that can be avoided. I don't think it's something that is inherent to floating zones, so long as you consider these keys to success for a floating zone. One, be as transparent as possible with the public. So that they know anywhere in the town where a floating zone could land, and very clearly what those applicability standards are. That you're clearly defining development standards. So what can happen, what's it gonna look like, what are the setbacks to neighbors and so on and so forth. And make sure neighbor, residents understand what to expect from the benefits the town might receive in return. And this is something I know you all talked about a bit on, on March 10th, that in return for this change of uses, generally a more dense development, you're getting things back in terms of benefits, amenities on, on the property or for the town.
Can we interrupt you for a minute? That Sue Sutherland is attending the meeting now.
Ah, great.
She will be acting as the, as the member regular member. Go ahead, Chuck.
Thank you. So a few other things that we wanted to give you a little bit more background on before we dive into the remaining policy questions. And the first is contributing structure. And this is a very important concept for this floating zone. And we want to just make sure you have a little bit of background on what this is. This is a term that originated from the laws that regulate historic districts. So when an historic district is created in the country, you generally identify what the contributing structures are. What are the buildings that make that district unique and historically important? Now, in the context of a floating zone, Grotton can define this term really however you want. You're not, you're not restricted into, into how you define a contributing structure. But in brief, in this context, these are the historical institutional buildings that you want to preserve, at least to a large extent, on these sites. So an example, in the photo on the slide, would be the remaining historic buildings at the Mystic Education Center. I generally want to consider those to be a contributing structure. And again, we'll talk a little bit more about the remaining policy questions related to contributing structures in a bit. But for now, wanted to throw out a potential definition for contributing structures. So basically, these are structures that had an educational or institutional use. And one of the things that we've discussed with staff is calling out very specific types of uses that would count, where this, this would apply. So we're thinking municipal, state, and federal buildings, post offices, libraries, banks, hospitals, and firehouses. So one of our questions to you in a minute will be, is this list complete? Are there other types of uses that you would like to consider? Second, that a structure or set of structures has to be over 50 years old as of the day of the application. And that's pretty standard for historic designation, that 50-year timeframe. And then finally, that that structure or set of structures served as the principal building on the lots. So you don't have one, you know, garage or shed that was historically significant, but the principal structure was not. So we will, we will consider that definition as a group. Another concept, character-defining features. So this is another concept that comes out of historic preservation. And these are essentially the aspects, the physical aspects of a building that make it interesting or special. So this is the shape, opening, roof lines, projections, trim, window treatments, the materials of the building. So these, just the images you see on the screen are zoomed in. Pictures of different features on Mystic Education Center buildings that might be considered character-defining. And this will be an important concept for later in our discussion. All right, now we get into some of the stuff that we started discussing, you started discussing two weeks ago. I won't review all the purposes of the regulations, but the one thing that you all suggested on March 10th was to add something to the purpose regarding meeting the needs of the town. So you can see in the bright red text at the bottom, we have made an addition, create developments that will enhance Grotton's quality of life and meet the town's needs for a variety of uses, open spaces, or open space amenities, et cetera. So we're at our first pause for discussion. And we have two questions related to the purpose of the regulations. One, wanted to see if that addition, that red text to the purpose meets what you had requested at, at your last meeting. And two, should nursing homes, and we'll, we'll open it up, I suppose, to, to other uses, but specifically, should nursing homes be added to the list of applicable institutional uses? So with that, I will turn it over to staff to look for hand raises.
You can either, for discussion, Halzad. I will, I will.
I am muted myself. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so.
But we can hear. I don't know that you have to unmute.
Go ahead, Hal.
I think I can unmute myself, and I did. With regard to the nursing homes, just wanna make sure I understand what the purpose of that would be in terms of preservation or whatnot. We really don't care if we preserve, I don't believe we care if we preserve the nature of the nursing home so much. The underlying zoning, we wanna be careful of because they happen to be residential areas. For the one that we've got that are absolutely enormous, we want to allow other uses. But my question is, are ancillary uses already available? I mean, on an enormous lot, can, can they put up a restaurant and a daycare? And, I don't know. Something else, so long as it's a tiny percentage of their entire holdings now?
So this is Deb Jones. Thanks, Hal, for that question. The map that was also forwarded to you in your packet, that we will get to in this PowerPoint in a few minutes, shows that there are three, there are three parcels that the assessor's office classifies as nursing homes that would, that have structures that are over 50 years old on it. One of them is Fairview, which is in a residential zone. One is Mystic River Residential on Godfrey Street in Mystic. And the other one is the one on High Street that is escaping the Mystic River or something. So in a residential zone, no, the, the actual nursing home and the active adult community are special permit uses. Are they still special permit uses at this point?
Yes.
And so the ancillary uses would not, they might be in the building as a cafeteria, restaurant, but it wouldn't be open to the public. So especially in terms of Fairview, adding that category to allow, to let them use this type of regulation would definitely allow for a, a more interesting, flexible reuse.
And to me, that would be the exception and worthwhile, is that if they, that's gonna be an absolutely enormous facility when it's done. And to allow them to do a little bit of shopping and a little bit of restaurant going, that doesn't preclude the neighbors from coming over and using it. That part seems beneficial to me.
Does anyone else have any?
Yes, there's two other people that have raised their hands. Barbara Tarbox?
Am I on now?
Yes.
I agree that nursing homes should be added, particularly Fairview. Although I see that they're already, going along with what, what Hal was saying, I think, about restaurants and, and other facilities that are there. I think they're doing it now.
Deb Jones, again, I think we're aware of that, but I don't believe that was permitted as part of their, as part of their special permit. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think it, I think nursing homes should be added. And I'm, I'm wondering, is, is there any other possibilities of institutional uses that we haven't thought of yet?
Deb Jones, again, I think, you had this discussion back in August of 2019. And I think we kicked around the idea of churches. And I think we decided not to include that for some reason, but that's the only other institution that comes to mind.
Why, why, this is Barbara. Why didn't we include churches?
Jeff Pritchard, can I make a statement? I think we're misinterpreting what this item is for. It's not for the final use, it's for the existing use, isn't it?
Correct.
Why do we care what the existing use is? It's just as a historic building that we wanna maintain.
Deb Jones, again, that would open up an old house to go ahead and apply to be a multifamily or a restaurant or some sort of mixed use.
Wait a minute, we're confusing developed use versus existing use.
John Reiner, Director, Planning and Development. So, yes. I think what, what Deb is trying to say is what we're looking at is this zoning regulation could apply to existing uses that are, if we say, yes, we want it to be nursing homes. Do we want it to be existing historic buildings that are churches, that are also, meet all these other criteria that we've laid out? Not the end use. So we're on the same page with you, Jeff, but Deb's point is, if we don't limit the amount of uses that it is today, that'll open up a whole nother realm of properties that we weren't intending to open it up to. Unless the commission wants to open it up to more parcels.
Can't we go back to what is the purpose of this discussion? I think we're losing it. Your develop, if you had an old farmhouse on a 50-acre plot, I don't think you wanna apply this to it, because it's not of an important or significant piece.
Agreed.
A structure is not important. This is trying to say we have a structure that we wanna preserve and allow the development around it to occur. And it means it isn't normally allowable. And unless we have a lot of buildings on a large piece of property, it shouldn't be used. If we just have one big building on a 50-acre plot of land, why would we wanna use this method, this floating zone? It, it is not necessary to preserve that one structure. It would be just preserving the historic structure. We're talking about multiple buildings, aren't we?
But not, John Reiner, not necessarily, because it could be one building. So for example, the Shepherd by the Sea, Shepherd of the Sea Church, which, as of right now, we're not sure if we're including churches, but that is a single building, a historic building on a piece of property. If we wanted to preserve that building and allow flexibility of use, this may be a regulation that we would wanna apply to it.
This is for a 10-acre, the way it's been proposed, and maybe it's gonna be even bigger, 10-acre plot. You don't need 10 acres to preserve one small structure.
Deb Jones, again, I, I think the purpose here is to identify structures that are essentially in residential zones. And right now, the development options for those properties are, you know, subdivided. And, and you don't necessarily have to keep the historic structure. So I think it's to give people a bit more flexibility in their development proposals other than what the underlying zone is. So you don't, so if you, if you have a need to develop your property, it doesn't just have to be a residential subdivision. It could be something else. That was.
Really, this is, isn't this really to allow the proposals for the oral school and for William Sealy to have some sort of structure going forward to do something with them? Because when I look at this, what we're really talking about is school reuse. I don't see this as historic at all. And I understand the past, maybe the model was they have a lot of local neighborhood elementary schools and everything. But we're not talking, I don't think about the airport and the public works up in Grotton and stuff. And you get rid of some of these, go along Fairview. That's a question on my mind. But you really left with so many small schools and, and maybe for good reasons, it's good to centralize this instead of having them all over the place. But then I would think you would need to say, okay, in a school situation where the neighbors bought a house thinking that they're gonna have a known quantity across the street, how is this gonna work so you can do a William Sealy development or an oral school or something like that? So you can do a William Sealy development or an oral school and something like that without having rafters packed with unhappened neighbors. And is it really about setbacks and heights and uses and stuff like that? So that's just my, that was, I drove around all these, it was very interesting.
So. John Reiner, just one quick item, just for clarification purposes. Sealy School, actually, this would not be applicable. That building, the plan is to knock that building down. And that building already has a, I think it's a CR or.
Right, the zoning is still, is appropriate right now for a multi-unit development.
But is it historic? Is it over fifty years old? See, I, I find this kind of ludicrous that we can throw a historical here to me because if somebody, a person has a great development plan. For the ten acres. And these buildings, I mean, driving around, this is not the target, all of them. You might want to say, you know, gee, if they have something that's modern or fits a neighborhood or it's attractive. Why do we need to keep this old structure? I think that's very moving for the building. And I'm not sure it makes sense, like the picture up here showing the window of the oral school, it means something's missing. Okay, I know, everybody has their own things.
We have Michael Kane that wants to speak. Michael?
So, Michael Kane here. I, I guess. The picture that I'm seeing on the screen is of the Groton Regency, so this would, this is not one of the nursing homes that was mentioned.
Correct.
But I guess some of the. I mean, we're talking about nursing homes at this point, and it seems like the Mystic River in particular has had a lot of problems with. You know, the neighbors, and I wonder if. I don't know if another use would be better, maybe. I guess it would depend on what that use was. But I, I can see what's going on here, but I, I'm, right now, we're talking about nursing homes. Is that correct?
John Reiner, so we're asking if. Current uses that are nursing homes should be added to the list of items that this could apply to for reuse. The one, the one instance for Mystic River, that would actually fall under the small scale institutional reuse.
Okay.
I, I think maybe the other question to ask the Planning and Zoning Commission, because I'm hearing a little bit of this from two members. Are we making this overly complex? And if the commission wants us, I, I don't want to kind of necessarily go back to the drawing board a little bit. But if you want us to simplify this. How would you like us to simplify it? Maybe Jeff Davis can help lead that discussion a little bit. We, we can punt that question in a minute, because I think there was one other. Commission member that wanted to speak.
Can I just, I don't, I don't know about simplifying it, but I think that defining, like, if we're going to have these, we've named the three nursing homes. And so that, to look at them specifically. And to, and to make sure that we're setting rules that would apply to these three nursing homes. We know which ones they are. And I think that we have to be deeply concerned about the neighbors. We had, you know, especially the Mystic River. A lot of input from the public when they were doing just what they were doing to try to make the property better. And so I think to change it, you're going to get a lot of even more input from the neighbors and not in a positive way.
That's the one.
This is Deb Jones, again, I ju, I just want to clarify, the Mystic River Residential is on Godfrey Street. And this, this particular regulation would not apply to it as written, well, we don't have the regulations right now, but as, as envisioned. These, what you're looking at right now are for properties that are over ten acres, that is less than ten acres.
Okay. Anyway, that's, those are my comments at this point.
And the one on High Street.
That's not.
Over. Fairview is over ten acres and the one off of High Street is also over ten acres. Kevin Pitbull would like to comment.
Yeah, so a lot of my questions actually got answered, both what Jeff said and what Barbara said. So if we're just talking about nursing homes and we have three, I mean, it seems like not that tough a decision. If the template is over, you know, ten acres, but where I'd like to go with what John said is. I think if the staff simply provides, which I don't call it simplifying, but you shrink wrap what the recommendation would be. And then we can kind of move it a little bit, we can discuss it in that fashion. So I think in some ways it's hard, or at least what we're going through, it's difficult to define what we're trying to achieve. And I heard Jeff say that a couple of times, and or it appears as if we're losing it. So my recommendation would be the staff make a recommendation as far as what you've heard from the different. You know, experts we brought in such as, you know, Jeff today. And basically say, you know, here's the amount of properties, here are the towns locally that have done it. Here are the results that we've gotten from it, and here's the reason we're, we're trying to do it, and it affects this number of properties. And we're including, you know, the institutional. You know, institutions here, and here's the other potential. And once you make that, then we can talk about it, I think. Because we've heard a lot of good comments, but I think we're all kind of struggling to find a lot of the different things here. So those are my thoughts.
And now we have Hal Zod.
Yeah, I kind of agree with what we just said. I want to kind of throw in there about what the end result would be. And which goes to what was also said about things we want to preserve. Part of the background of this was preserving some of the. The buildings that we already have as a good excuse for developing them in other ways. And truth be known, most of the schools we have, the structures themselves, I don't see any great need of preserving them. We would like to have some flexibility in what we do to them. But we're going to have this little conflict if we have one of the requirements is to preserve part of it historically. And we're, we're honestly, we're thinking of the oral school and we say preserve something. We don't have any real great historicity in Butler School. These things were thrown up cheaply in the fifties and they weren't a big deal and. We wouldn't mind having something else there. So certainly with the other schools, you also have the issue of what I can put onto a thirty-six acre site. Is wildly different than what I can put onto a fourteen acre site. We might not be able to come up with a blanket statement. Or a thirty-six acre site that's kind of off of Tollgate Road. Surrounded by swap on either side, as opposed to something that's hemmed in by housing on other sides. This is a blanket that might be too big to try to, to do very well. I don't have a solution for that. But I am very concerned with it. It came down to some other things that came on later, but. With regard to putting in churches. What church properties do we have that'll be that big except for Shepherd of the Sea? So this would be directed at Shepherd of the Sea. Would we let them do something else? Well, certainly, we'd like them to keep that property. I guess it's a big nice thing, but. Is that a requirement of it? Would we be horribly sorry to see it go if something better went there? I don't think so, as opposed to the historic buildings on the oral school, which would be a shame to see them just completely gone from history. I think they're different questions, so that. We're trying to solve everything with one blanket, and I, I think we might have the wrong blanket. I, I do like the idea of come up with a proposal because I think we're too open-ended right now. But I, I still don't see, what it looked like we were trying to do is make some preservation. And I understand preservation intimately, I get that. But what we're seem to be accomplishing with it is not necessarily preserving, but just adding flexibility. I like that too, but then the preservation kind of goes away for most of those just flexible places, like all of our, most of our schools.
John Reiner, we would not, under its current concept of where we're taking this. I don't see this regulation being used on any others. Any other school in the town of Groton that I can envision right now. I don't know if Deb or Diane. Because Pleasant Valley, I see that building coming down. Sealy School, I see that building coming down.
Deb Jones, I mean, Mary Morrison on Tollgate Road is the only other one. I, I, I think I agree with, with you, Hal, that it's not a great building. But that area is surrounded by Navy housing, and you might want to give that more flexibility to develop as something other than just. Residential, single family or, or two-family.
Well, I completely agree with that. Except I don't want to require that they keep a piece of the building to do it.
Right, yeah, that's right.
Right. Are we really talking about the need for? A floating zone for developing large areas or large tracts of land in the town. Versus having just historic buildings being the only, the main driving excuse. And maybe the buildings. Would be allowed to be reused in a large tract development.
Deb Jones, again, I think. I think we originally had tied it to structures because. There was a development on a large piece of property that may not be suitable for its original use anymore. I think if we just do a floating zone for a large piece of property. I, I mean, in the north end of town, there's a lot of large pieces of property that you might land. A fairly intense mixed use on. I mean, I think if, if you just tie it to the size of the property, you are opening up the number of properties that could use this exponentially.
It, it doesn't, John Reiner, it doesn't mean you have to approve them there, but it does. Open up the possibility that people can ask. I mean, staff can say, no, we don't recommend this. And when you go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we don't expect you to get a favorable. Recommendation and approval from them, because with all of these, once we develop whatever regulation, however this floating zone is finished. The Planning and Zoning Commission still needs to approve a zone change. And the way we're envisioning this, link that zone change to an approved master plan. So it, it won't just be, hey, we're going to start putting this floating zone on pieces of property with no vision or no plan associated with it. So I, I think that's why we're linking it to the institutional historic reuse. Again, if the sense or direction of the commission is, well, maybe it's better. Easier, makes more sense, but easier is probably not the right word, better or more, it's clearer for us to. Create a floating zone district. We can look into that also. We could do that, and I think a lot of the development standards and things that we have could still be applicable. But it would take a little bit of a different process.
So you're talking about developing the large tracts of our north part of town. Then you're right into other issues, POCD and stuff like that, and there's always been a lot of, you know, money and sewer. That was always pretty difficult. It seems to me, just look at the map, you've got a school reuse problem. And you may have a few other opportunities too, but the main message to me is just schools. And some of them are certainly worth of preserving some of it, I would guess, some aren't. Some of them have good setbacks. You could probably worry things with a lot of others. It, it, it seems that's a unique problem. It's been a problem in this town since I moved here, what, twenty years ago. Was trying to reuse a lot of these schools that's sitting there. That's a, that's a different situation than a Fairview. So to me, it's like, we really need to solve the school problem because it's all over town anyway. And it's a lot of profits, a lot of potential improvements to the town's financials.
We have Michael Kane.
John, you had mentioned the floating zone district. Is that something that is, I don't, if you could define that in a minute or after. So then, the idea of preserving buildings, it sounds like we're doing it for architectural purposes. Is there any thought to preserving these buildings so that the neighbors then see something that they recognize? As a building that they recognize, you know, from when they originally purchased their property, or is this just? For buildings that are of a certain age and architectural character?
Deb Jones, I mean, I think the idea was to keep important institutional buildings. That have been surrounded by residential neighborhoods there as part of the fabric of the neighborhood. And to allow some sort of creative reuse. And doing that with this type of regulation, as well as the one that we forgot to send you, the small scale one. You know, to try to preserve something that was, that has been historically part of the neighborhood.
And John Reiner, I'll actually defer to Jeff Davis to explain the floating zone. In less, in, in about a minute. I don't know if his mic is still open.
Yes.
It is, and, and John, I actually, I had the same question that they did. I wasn't sure what. What you were referring to as a floating zone versus what I just described.
So, John Reiner, no, so having a floating zone similar to how other municipalities have the. Floating zone. So here we have an institutional reuse floating zone. Does it need to be an institutional reuse, or is it something that?
Oh, I see, a floating zone without the historic institutional reuse component. Okay, yeah, because as we, as we mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, a floating zone can be used for all sorts of purposes. This one, as written, or you know, as conceived, would be for historic institutional reuses. It could easily be for the redevelopment of large parcels. You know, it can serve whatever purpose you're trying to accomplish. So I know I was not there for the March tenth discussion. One of the questions on the table was, do you want something that is very specifically targeted to the Mystic Education Center? Or do you want, do you think there are other opportunities in town for, for this type of redevelopment? And if so, would you like this to apply there as well? And the, the message I got back from March tenth was, yeah, we want this to apply to other places. So that's, that's really the. First question, what, what are you trying to accomplish? What areas in town, what specific properties? Do you think this kind of flexibility and preservation and or preservation would be useful? And, you know, if, if. We do try to do something that's very specifically targeted to Mystic Education Center and then have. Something else that is. Or other potential large-scale uses that may not involve historic preservation. You know, we, we can go that route as well, but I do think, I agree, it's, when I get to the bottom of what is it you're trying to accomplish? And what, what parcels in town, what properties in town do you think could use some flexibility in the future?
Jeff, this is Deb Jones. This might be a good opportunity to go to the next slide because that's the map.
Yep, I agree.
Well, it's the map discussion.
Right, the map discussion. So our, our initial questions for, for the map. Was, you know, this, this issue of, all right, we've got your, your regular historic institutional reuse provisions. And then this floating zone for the larger scale things. And we'd initially thrown out this possibility of ten acres being that, that dividing point. Again, maybe that's not even the question, but the town did put together this map. That you all received that includes parcels with structures fifty years and over. That are greater than ten acres, and then the, the three nursing home properties that were discussed. So, you know, if we went with the concept that we were envisioning after March tenth. You know, there are only so many parcels in, in the town that this would apply to. So the question is, do we have a higher acreage threshold to try to eliminate some of these things? Do we put other performance standards into the applicability requirements? So this applies to a, a, a smaller number of parcels or a more targeted type of parcels. requirements? Uh, so this applies to, uh, a, a smaller number of parcels or a very, a more targeted, uh, type of parcels.
Do we really need to have the transfer station? It has a structure that's over fifty years old.
It has a zone.
Right.
Over family housing. Be a nice view. Close to open things.
If you look at this map and you're like, wow, we don't really want the types of standards we've been discussing to apply to any of these areas other than the Mystic Education Center. Then we should probably explore riding those applicability standards more tightly.
And, and maybe from what I'm hearing, maybe also Fairview and possibly the airport.
Is the airport, is that a viable option?
If we build on sticks.
I was gonna say. Portions of it maybe.
But getting back to this, there's something that's not just the structures that are unique on the oral school. It's the amount of buildings and the fact they're spread out is unique.
Yeah.
And maybe we just need a special district to develop that type of an area, which really is a specific locate area rather than trying to make it universal. Cause if Fairview Development, you only have one structure. And you're going to end up with a lot of smaller buildings around it that are not historic. But the oral school, it seems like a waste of all those buildings. To just scrap them or tear them down. And build mansions there, which is what you'd have now. It's eighty, isn't it?
Eighty thousand.
Thousand, which is mansions, which probably wouldn't sell today, but I mean, that's all you're gonna get out of it, which is maybe what a better use, that might be a better use to use the buildings, reuse the buildings. And just keep that in mind as we go forth in this discussion.
Steve Pudicek would like to speak.
Hey Deb, uh, what was the, I'm trying to think that, I thought that we always had a bad, um, feeling towards making floating zones. We just never liked it in previous discussions. And why can't we just do a special permit? You know, use the special permit process for historic reuse? Did you get that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just thinking it through. This is Deb Jones. So i- if you, so you're thinking anywhere in the RU eighty, by special permit, you would want to allow a, um, you know, multi-unit developments with offices and restaurants and because you, you wouldn't just do it for one particular parcel. You'd do it for the entire zone.
Well, we're talking about historic reuse, so it has to be historic and it has to be a reuse of an existing building. So, you know, every one would come before the commission, be weighed out to see if it's compatible and do all the things we do for a special permit. And I just don't get what we're getting out of a floating zone that we have to arbitrarily apply somewhere. And, um, you know, with what I always perceived as a negative connotation. Whereas if it was just a, you know, historic reuse section of our spec, uh, of our regulations. And that covered all the particulars that we wanted to tighten this up on.
John Reiner, um, so I think, you know, the time I've been here, uh, we've heard of a couple of bad examples across the state or in our region of where floating zones may have been proposed on properties, but then it, they didn't end up really going anywhere. Floating zones can be a great tool. And one of the reasons why we're looking at the floating zone versus a special permit, uh, two things come to mind pretty quickly to my, uh, come to mind. One, with the floating zone, we would require a master plan upfront so that we can actually see what the proposal is. And it wouldn't have to be one hundred percent engineered and designed. And those are things that the commission could negotiate with the property owner and hear the feedback from, uh, the surrounding neighborhood about, all right, what's the best way to do this? Two, the off-site improvements that we can require as part of that floating zone that we really can't get from a special permit type process. And when we were looking at, a-again, still John, when we were looking at what is the best process to do this? What's the best way to give the town the most amount of control and ability to say yes or no? The floating zone with a master plan process, which requires the landing of the zone, the creation of a master plan, uh, together gives us certainty of what we're getting and that the infrastructure improvements actually can happen and would be paid for by the development, uh, as part of the project. As opposed to the special permit process. I, I think a little bit of what we're hearing is maybe and we can have a little more discussion on this. Maybe we should be just rethinking this as a Mystic Education Center floating zone or something, um, a little bit more narrow. Um, I, I, I don't know.
There's one of the other things that we had discussed when we first started thinking about this. I mean, just a little bit of history for, for folks who may not have been involved in this conversation now. What's that?
And this is Jeff Davis talking.
Sorry, this is Jeff Davis, Horsey Wood and Group. Uh, we did initially explore an option that was a single historic institutional reuse provision. Perhaps split in two that, uh, you know, over that ten acre or whatever, uh, other size limit. Um, you would, you would kick up, uh, uh, to some, some additional standards. Uh, and the body at the time did not, uh, feel it, you know, those really meshed that there are two different levels going on of complexity, which is why we, uh, started exploring two separate things. Uh, in terms of the larger scale option, um, and, and where it should apply. Uh, one of the other things we explored, uh, was your, your current P O C D, you have nodes. Uh, and maybe you're building off of those nodes and identifying, uh, nodes where this would apply and, uh, creating a new node, uh, in your P O C D for the Mystic Education Center. And then if there are any other nodes, for example, um, the intersection of Gold Star Highway and one seventeen, um, you know, you want it to apply there, it could apply there as well. And you could base it more geographically than on, um, uh, performance standards. Uh, so those, those have all been options that have been discussed. And I don't think anyone's been really happy with, uh, where any of the, the options have landed. But, uh, we've got to, uh, pick one at some point and, uh, draft it for you. And so that, you know, hopefully one, once you see, uh, what the actual regulations look like, um, well, in a more concrete sense, you can, you can provide, uh, some more detailed feedback.
Jeff, this is Jeff Pritchard. Are we really going back to the MX zone as a floating zone? With the fact that we have historic structures within it, redevelopment of those might give you a little bit more latitude as to what you can do in that zone? Is that what we're really talking about?
Yeah. This is Deb Jones. Not, not really. I think we didn't go with the whole, um, MX node zone because the zoning commission changed the map, um, to allow, you know, a lot of mixed use developments on most of those nodes. Um, a lot of them have become CR, which allows, you know, multi-unit, it allows restaurants. There's no need to land a floating zone on them. And so I think that's why we didn't go down that path of, of doing nodes and maybe making another Mystic Ed node.
John Reiner, instead we were looking for a different solution because now, as Deb said, our zoning regulations allow a lot more of that mixed use. We also recognize that the MX zone wasn't utilized, so it may have been a little too complex. It may, I think some of it had to do.
I'm not saying, I'm saying like, I'm just using it as an example, not as something we want to recreate. But it's really you want a floating node. Jeff Davis was talking about.
Uh, John Reiner, so that was one option.
And, but in this case, we want to say if you're reusing existing structures, you're gonna have a little bit more latitude on choice of how you can develop the one. Isn't that what we're really saying?
Yes.
How's that gonna work on the oral school?
So, John Reiner, so that's where we would actually start developing the regulation itself. And once we get, what we're trying to do right, you know, tonight is get a little bit more direction to dive a little bit deeper with the commission. So that we can draft up a regulation to put in front of you of, okay, is this meeting what we're looking for? Or have we missed the mark? And I, I think we've gotten a, a good amount of feedback thus far. We have some ideas. We just went through a major rewrite with our previous zoning commission. So we're pretty well versed and, you know, uh, Diane has been doing, uh, working with Jeff Davis, a lot of research into other floating zones and other municipalities. So we have some really good concepts of how this could work in Groton. It's really trying to narrow it down to where do we want it to land? You know, because we could even add additional, like, you know, example, uh, criteria that it has to have access to water and sewer. So that would take off the map a lot of that undeveloped land that people are concerned about. There are certain restrictions and criteria that we can put in any floating zone. So it won't just apply to any big parcel in town. But we're also, you know, we don't want to leave it too broad, but we don't want to narrow it down too, too much. We're, we're trying to find that balance.
But rather than arguing over whether you're gonna do churches and, and nursing homes. Should we forget that? Write it up so that it could apply to the miss, development of the Mystic Oral School. And after that's done, we could see, do we want to expand it to use elsewhere? Just to get moving on.
Cause you have a bird.
Cause we're talking about something.
Yeah, the clock's ticking.
Yeah, that's right. If, you know, not, if we just let the bell ring.
Hal Saad would like to speak.
Yeah, I completely agree with, uh, with Jeff on the, maybe we just don't want to focus on this and expand later. But I just heard the magic word a little bit earlier was that this is the only mechanism that we actually have at hand to provide for off-site improvements. Then this is the right way to go. If only for the oral school, which we're seeing from the oral school project. It'll need a tremendous amount of off-site improvements. If we do some other one, it might be the same thing. There will have to be some road widening, some stabilization, things that the town won't want to bear the entire burden of. We'd want the, the project to bear the burden. And if this is the mechanism for doing it, that's what I'm in favor of. There's, I see no other way to accomplish it, but maybe you're right. It's a floating zone just for that one place for now.
Deb Jones. Okay. If, if everybody is kind of on board with that, I think the remaining PowerPoint still is, is relevant to this discussion.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But we can make the decisions here now that we've anchored the.
Right, there we go. Okay. Take it away, Jeff.
Then, uh, direction to us, uh, when we write this first draft, we will focus it on the Mystic Education Center. Again, either specifically geographically or with probably with performance standards that only apply to, uh, the Mystic Education Center. So, uh, some other issues, uh, permitted uses, uh, some of the, uh, remaining discussion questions. Should any light industrial uses be accepted? Uh, now, one of the things I, from my understanding that you discussed on March tenth, that you're generally comfortable with the multifamily and commercial uses that, uh, were, were thrown out as possibilities. And it asked for a more specific list of the light industrial uses that might be acceptable. So going through your existing use table, uh, we're thinking alcoholic beverage production, small scale, which is no larger than, I believe, three thousand square feet. Uh, artisan and craft workshop, flex space, which, and again, you should all have in your packets the full definitions of these uses, uh, from the existing zoning regulations. Uh, but flex space, which is, uh, generally a combination of light industrial and commercial space. Uh, food and non-alcoholic beverage production, small scale. Uh, again, I believe that three thousand square feet or less. Uh, and light industrial, the general definition for light industrial. And I just want to reiterate something from our, uh, uh, your packet. Uh, we don't actually expect that light industrial general is what, is something you would want to allow. We only included the definition, uh, as a point of comparison to these other, uh, much lighter industrial uses. Actually, we'll, we'll pause there, uh, and, and discuss, discuss those, you know, do, do these seem appropriate? Uh, and again, in the context of Mystic Education Center, um, are there additional uses that you think, uh, we should be considering?
Michael Kane. Michael?
Michael's still muted. You're still muted, Michael. Oh, there you go.
Michael, now you can speak.
So are we talking about the Mystic Educational Center in regard to this? Or are we talking about, all of these, uh, properties that we were discussing earlier?
Well, if the direction from you all is that we should, when we write this first draft, focus on the Mystic Education Center, then the rest of this conversation is about the Mystic Education Center.
Okay. All right. That's fine. Uh, if I could just ask that, uh, in particular Sue, I'm having a hard time hearing you in the microphone. If, I don't know if you need to pull it closer or something like that. It's just, she's the only one that I have a difficult time hearing. Thank you.
Do you have anything else to say, Michael?
Is there anyone else over there?
Generally speaking, you feel that, uh, these lighter, light industrial uses are something we should consider? Again, in the context of Mystic Education Center?
We have Barbara Charbo. Barbara?
Uh, yes. Um, I'm not in favor of light industrial right now, uh, from what I understand of it. But also in reading over the materials, I saw some reference to warehouse type facilities. And I would definitely be against that. That's all.
Hal Saad?
Yeah, I'm, I to a degree, uh, agree with Barbara's that light industrial in and of itself not, I don't think it belongs in this. If we're looking for some kind of vibrant residential, slightly commercial, interesting place. Light industrial or warehouse type of things has no place. We've got other places for that. And we just assumed it went there. I would say for the other, all the other uses, uh, that are somewhat high industrial kind of things, so long as they have a patron part of them. So if it's an artist, artisan and craft workshop, so long as the public can come and view it working and buy some stuff, I'm okay with that. If you're making alcoholic beverages, be able, have a, a tasting room that you can sell it, just should be, these are, should be sidewalk related i- industries going on there if it's going to be light industrial. So I think that we'll go to all of them. You can have a bakery. Uh, in fact, one of the things was, that came up was how much, what percentage of the building or the, of the unit can be light industrial versus something else? And I'd say that's, it'll look very closely because if it's a bakery, uh, the front part is maybe fifteen percent of the entire thing, but it's good to have a bakery nearby. We'd all love to have one. Same with the, the craft workshop. The showroom might be minor compared to the workshops, as long as you can see into it. So I think you can actually have quite a large percentage of those things be beer production, pottery being made. Whatever, because the, as long as the front room is pretty small, but it still needs to be a sidewalk apparent pedestrian friendly kind of business. That's what we'd be shooting for here. If it's not that, we have other places where we'd rather put those businesses.
John Reiner, um, thanks for the feedback thus far. I think when we're envisioning light industrial, if it was something the commission was in favor of, it would be a very small percentage of the, the property. And it's really probably more focused at the existing Mystic Education Center building, which could be. which could be reused as office space and maybe some light assembly of, when you look at the definition of light industrial of, you know, already prepared parts, but it might be some fabrication of specialized equipment or something along those lines, but that's, I think that was more the direction we were going on that.
Limited maybe by the number of employees as opposed to square footage?
Yeah, I mean.
It's harder to police than square footage, but.
Well, just as a definition, maybe it's a starting. That's what we're talking. Especially.
I'm sorry, I missed what Jeff Pritchard said.
Well, thinking about limiting light industrial to, to the number of employees, just as far as, it's a small assembly area.
Yeah, that is difficult. That is difficult to put into regulations, yeah.
Yeah. Well, maybe.
Or a very small square footage area and really outlining what it is.
Yeah, specialized, it has to be specialized.
Yeah.
Like the, the shop for, was it chowls or whatever they're making on Packer Road? That type of a business, that might be appropriate, which is very small, specialized or hardcore factories.
Historic use.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on this topic?
Yeah, with regard to, it's true, you could have some things that are strictly assembly and whatnot. But my, my thing is, yeah, you can't, if there's some way to write it into it, not being on the sidewalk side. If it's in upstairs, if it's in the back, you don't really care what's going on, kind of away from the pedestrian friendly places. You should be able to walk down the street and you don't have a dead zone, is what I'm talking about. You have a really dead zone of any kind of even minor light industrial, if all they're doing is stacking boxes in one room and making tubing in another room, so.
A lot of that will be addressed by your design standards, actually, and your streetscape standards. So that regardless of the use, this, this, these regulations will have stipulations for active street frontage. And so, yeah, a lot of those, a lot of those concerns, I think, will be addressed through, through design rather than restrictions on uses.
Okay, that works.
And so that is the second question, and we've started talking about this. Should there be a cap on the amount of light industrial uses? And if so, how much? That's one thing you can say, let the market decide. I mean, honestly, there's a much stronger market for residential right now. The odds that you're going to get overwhelmed by light industrial are frankly slim. But if that's something that you're concerned about, you could certainly put a cap on that.
Is this streetscape requirements going to limit this by itself? Amount of light, light industrial use you can have?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Jeff.
Well, is it really the limiting, like you were stating before, that it's the streetscape controls? How much you can see? See, so the light industrial use would be behind there? The actual square footage critical?
It's not, it's not something that I personally find critical. I think, you know, if your, if your goal is to have an active street front, that the design standards will address that. And, you know, if there is a demand for this, it will go in those unseen places within the development. I'm not, this is not something I'm personally, professionally very concerned about.
Barbara Tarbox?
Yes, can, I don't quite understand this 5% gross floor area. What do you mean floor area?
You could take the total square footage of the floor space of the entire development and say, no more than 5%, no more than 10% of that square footage can be taken up by light industrial space, for example.
Okay, okay. So you're not talking just about one building?
No, no, the entire.
Okay, thanks.
Michael Kane?
Michael Kane, it seems as if this is sort of, to me, a critical question, because in order for this to work, if you're going to have a business operating place like that, you have, they, they're going to operate on a synergy. It would seem that they would develop between themselves. And if there was just one brewery, say, in this thing, it's not going to work as well as if there were a multiple of different kinds of businesses, would seem to me. So I think that this is, what that number is or what that percentage is, I don't know. But maybe we need to look into, if there's other properties that operate like this, what that percent is so that, you know, there isn't just somebody up there with a bakery and that's it. You can't put anything on the bread, kind of a thing.
Well, remember that this is in addition to the other commercial uses that are, that are being allowed. And I think the vast majority of the non-residential uses are going to be commercial in nature rather than industrial. So this is, I think, you know, and, and yeah, you could have, I mean, again, these are small scale, 3,000 square feet for the food and beverage production. So these are things that are going to complement a restaurant. Things that are going to complement retail space. These are generally not going to be things that are taking up a large area or are going to require access to other industrial uses to be viable. They really are more things that would complement the existing, or sorry, the, the other residential and commercial components of a development.
Yeah, I think that that's, that's what, to me, is critical. I think of like the Velvet Mill in Stonington. You know, just how, how those different uses complement each other.
Yeah, because I could, I could easily see, you know, you have a small brewery attached to a pub, and that'd be the only industrial use, industrial use within a property and being very successful. So I don't, I don't know, you necessarily need multiple of those light industrial uses for any one of them to be successful in this context.
All right, so for me, this is, this is sort of like something that needs to be thought of and discussed. But that's it. All right, those are the ends of my comments there. Thank you.
Thank you. Halsad?
Yeah, I think the, the percentage probably is, as Jeff mentioned, it's maybe not as big a concern, especially in the reality of the oral school, which looks, for the time, for the moment, like it's going to go more towards a lot of residential. 10% of the total floor area available to the entire property, that's a lot of floor area to make up with 3,000 square foot businesses. So I maybe, maybe it really shouldn't be a concern. I mean, I really love the idea that you could live in an apartment there and work there. Wasn't that a great concept? But what would be, how far over, you know, if you're up to 20% possible, and it really did fill up with 20% of these smaller businesses, how bad would that be for the nature of the place? And I don't think it'd be bad at all. So if I, I'd be up for, if we are going to sign a percentage, I would actually say it should be allowed to be higher than 10%. And it would still wouldn't affect the nature of the, of the community.
Barbara Tarbox?
Yes, I don't have a problem with businesses in small breweries and pubs. What I have a problem with is light industrial, as I understand it. And I just, the more I'm thinking about it, the more I'm opposed to light industrial being used in there. Thank you.
And just to clarify, the light industrial and the definition that was included in your packet, we are not recommending allowing quote unquote, "light industrial", but only these other categories, specifically the alcoholic beverage production, artisan and craft workshop, et cetera. So, yeah, I would, I would agree that we would not recommend allowing light industrial quote unquote as a use.
Deb Jones, or at least severely limiting the light industrial, because I think as John said, I could see some assembly maybe taking place there that wouldn't necessarily fall under, you know, artisan craft workshop or flex space. So maybe, maybe really putting the limit on any kind of light industrial and then allowing the others per the, the regulations.
And John Reiner, and it, and it could be almost as an ancillary use to an office use that's in one of the buildings. You know, not as a primary standalone light industrial use outside of those other artisan breweries and things. I, I, I think we got some good direction from the commission on this one. And this is, you know, also, it should be noted that the, when we get a master plan, although it might not specifically say this is where the brewery is going to be, it could show footprints or indication of space that would be allowed for these general types of uses. So I think the commission would also have a secondary bite at the apple, not just through the drafting of the regulation, but then as it lands and the master plan too.
So I really don't have to go over this, this has not changed much since March 10th, in terms of that projected process overview. So you'd start with a zoning map amendment. We just added to this flow chart where a public hearing would be required, or where a public hearing might be required, and where things must be approved concurrently. So you see here, special permits does require a permit, a public hearing, site plan application may require a public hearing. So just, as, as well as inland wetlands, so just being clear about that upfront for applicants.
Jeff Pritchard, I, I have a real problem with the way this flow chart looks. It's confusing because you don't have things connected. But really doesn't the, the developer is going to come in with a proposal? Then it should have sort of pre-application reviews. And then I think the next thing is you're developing a master plan application with the details in it before you can do the zoning map amendment, because you have to understand how the property is going to be developed. It's a large piece of property, and it isn't like a subdivision where it may sit there and it's, but it's really developed by plan, but how's it going to be controlled? Is it going to be somebody coming in and owning the whole property through the whole evolution for 20 or 30 years, or 50 years, or forever? And leasing the land and little private development occur? Or is it going to be that he, the developer will build all the structures and put in all the roads? Do all that stuff and just rent them out? Or is he going to do it like a sub, an industrial type subdivision and develop apartments and sell them off in pieces? And have a lot of, a regular housing subdivision put in there as part of the development? I mean, those are different alternatives. And that's what you have to have in the master plan. How is he going to keep it going? And as he has the financing, probably nobody's going to have enough funds to go develop the whole thing from start to finish. And it might take years or decades to finish it.
Yeah, that's, and we have worked in communities that have been doing similar projects literally for decades. And in a case like this, I think what, what staff has been considering, generally speaking, yeah, you'd have whatever, whatever, whether it's a single owner who runs and owns everything for the life of the project, or whether things are subdivided, you start out with a master plan. And if new owners come into the picture, they are beholden to that master plan. And if at any point it has to change substantively, then you have to go through the master plan amendment process or go through the zoning process again. And, you know, on the one hand, that is a pain in the neck for the developer. And, you know, I know you're trying to do something that's developer friendly, but at the same time, it gives the town more certainty and control over the process moving forward, to make sure that whatever was proposed is what you get. But this is not, this is not unique to you. There have been a number of communities that have dealt with this very thing. And it really just becomes a matter of that balance between what, what you want to continue maintaining control over from the town and where you want to give.
You're missing my point. You're missing my point. I'm just saying the flow chart needs to put down after the pre-application review. I think the developer comes up with a proposed master plan application. Then after that gets accepted, then you put in the zoning map amendment application.
Oh, is that all? Okay. How does staff feel about that?
So, John Reiner, so I think the way the flow chart is laid out, it's a little confusing, because the intent would be someone has to come in, they would apply for a master plan and the zoning amendment at the same time. Or they, because.
They're developing, it's not applying for it.
They need to develop.
They're developing it.
Yes.
Where you can't go along with the zoning map amendment until the master plan is approved.
Right, right. They have to be approved at the same time, or it all falls apart. That's right.
Well, I think you gotta get an agreement, is a master plan is realistic. Because a guy's going to come in and come up with, I want to do everything great, but when you look at the details, it's going to be a mess.
You can't apply, you can't approve a master plan without it being consistent with the underlying zone. So you can't approve a master plan just approving it first. You would have to approve it with the zoning map amendment at the same time. That's the way it's done in the state of Connecticut. This is Diane Robson. Sorry.
Yeah, but I think you have to, well, the zoning map amendment has to be approved at the same time. But I think, but it should, it may not necessarily have to be something that requires action on it until you're ready to approve the master plan.
You have to approve them both at the same time.
No, the actual approval.
I, this is John Reiner, Jeff, I think we're on the same page. The master plan needs to be developed, the commission needs to buy into it, it needs to be designed. And when that's ready to be approved at the same time.
Then we should receive the zoning map amendment application when it's ready to be approved.
Well, then, we'll, we'll, we'll work through that logistically to make sure it matches with state law, because we want to make sure that there aren't certain timelines that one thing triggers.
No, that's what I'm worried about, the zoning map amendment application. You don't want to sit on that for two years while you're working out the master plan application.
Okay, yep.
That's all, that's the way I see it. You should get an agreement that the master plan is an acceptable document. You don't vote, you don't approve it.
Correct, but I think logistically, both applications for the master plan and the zoning map amendment might have to come in at the same time, because.
Well, maybe it's not an application, maybe it's just a dev- just a devote, I mean, it's a proposal that gets approved.
Well, the master plan can't get approved until the zoning has landed though.
No, I understand that. You have to have a proposal to work with. And that's what should be act, that's what should be reviewed, discussed, and people concur with that. Once the proposal is agreed to, then you can go forward with the application of the, I think, the master plan.
Yeah, Deb Jones, I, I think we envision not just one pre-application with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think it will be a work in progress until the commission is comfortable that the master plan is where they want it. And then at that point, the applicant will probably make application for both of those things.
But you, you need almost an agreement of a proposal. Maybe it's called a proposal rather than an application. Or the master plan proposal. And then the application comes in, once everybody agrees to that, then you approve. So the.
I don't think you can have the planning commission approving something without a public hearing. So you have to be real careful.
We'll be careful about the language. That's right.
Yeah, but you. Yeah, but you.
Yeah, you won't be approving anything, you will just, there might be a consensus that go ahead and apply now.
You're accepting a proposal, not approving it.
We'll, we'll be careful about the language.
Yes, that's what we really, I think what you have to do. Because it may take a long process.
It may.
Because it could be very complex.
Yep.
So just one question about that. It came up before. The public hearing for the zoning map, would that be something that was only a notice in the paper? Versus notifying the man who's affected by it?
Depends how you want to write this regulation.
It just seems to me in order to ensure a democratic process, we ought to at least have some idea. And I don't know what the answer would be.
Well, that could be part of the zone, part of the.
But it seems important, both of these, to make sure you really let him know.
Yep, absolutely, we'll work that in. Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear any of that.
So making sure we're notifying a butters is part of the master plan and zoning map amendment landing application.
Oh, sure.
Process.
Yep.
John Reiner was saying that.
So the use of a floating zone, we have is how you implement it would be as something permanently in zoning regulation. And then the floating zone application. Or is that a permanent?
That'll, it'll all get kind of wrapped into the zoning regulation language itself. That's, that's what makes this overly, it, it, it just, it makes it complex because there's an application process written into the text. Or there could have been. Diane, you said someone else wants to.
No, somebody, nobody else wants to speak.
Also been here.
Oh, Hal.
Yeah, I, I'd say to, to the language thing, you just kind of have it as part of the master plan preparation. There's not a line that you've got there, you've got the pre-application review, which is what you guys do. But when I were saying that we would like to see the preparation of it. And maybe that the outcome of that is whether or not we have any objections. That would be a way to say that we won't approve it, but we can say we have no objections to it going forward. But it does seem like the master plan and the zoning map amendment applications can easily be concurrent because it would be, here's the master plan and here's what the zoning map amendment would be to support that master plan. That's, to me, almost looks like it's only technical that it's two different things. It's a master plan and the zoning map changes that would be required. That's, that's one thing for us. It's only two things technically because the state says it is.
That's the approval.
Right.
Jeff, do you want to move forward?
Yes. All right. So, development standards. So I don't know if there's any additional discussion needed for this, but last meeting, you discussed benefits and design features that should be considered within the first draft of the floating zone. And so the list of things we have now, so these would be the things in exchange for this flexibility of uses, the developer would have to give things back in return. So providing mixed use at a certain level, providing that a certain percentage of homes have universal design or are accessible. A certain amount of homes are affordable. There's a certain amount of public recreation or other public uses, that there's private outdoor space for the individual residential units, structured parking, greater buffers between the floating zone and adjacent residential zones, and higher, higher architectural design standards. So this is the list as you discussed it two weeks ago. And we wanted to just take a moment to see if there is anything else, last couple of weeks you've thought of that we could try to include in the menu of benefits or design features that, that the developer could be providing in return.
I, I thought there was another list of items. Or thing. Things like movement of people and vehicles within the.
Uh, that would be for the design standards. Uh, so these, so the design standards are the things that you would hold them to, and then this would, this would be the things that sort of the bonuses you'd be getting in return.
Well, why is structured parking different than, than what you.
Because it's more expensive to build than surface parking. So it's sort of a benefit.
Oh, you mean structured parking, you mean like a parking garage?
Yes, yes.
Oh.
So if this sounds like a reasonable list, this is what we will start with when we, when we do the first draft. Providing options for, for a developer to provide one or more of these things in return for residential density.
Would we have to stay cop, certain, or identify certain improvements for public use have to be accomplished before people can move into housing units?
Deb Jones, I think we, we deal with that when they submit a site plan. We really get into the details that way, yeah.
Well, I mean, should that be specified as a requirement?
Um, I don't, I don't know that it needs to be in the regulation. Again, I think you can deal with that when there's, when you have a site plan application, which is basically the last step in this entire process.
Well, it's, I guess, phase of construction.
That would all be site plan, yeah. You can, you can generally lay it out with the master plan, but the real details of it, what's included in this phase.
No, it's just what should be included in, in the site plan should be identified.
Yep.
Not the specific, the type of.
So another thing would be an appropriate cap on bonus density. So you discussed a little bit about this two weeks ago that, you know, in return for these benefits and design features, a developer could get additional bonus residential density. But you don't want to allow that to go on forever necessarily. So should there be, I just wanted to get your, a sense of what, if you, if you have a cap, what would be the main purpose for it? Are you trying to set a cap so that the density just makes up for the additional benefits and design features that are being required? Or do you see some of this added residential density as a benefit in of itself? Uh, so that's, those are two first questions, which would kind of help us put a reasonable cap on the bonus density. And then another question, should the cap not apply to contributing structures, but just to new development? Uh, so that you could do whatever you could within the existing structure that you want to keep. But sort of put the cap on any new residential development on the site.
Well, it isn't a benefit, the mixed use and you've got a higher density and re, apartment living in the existing structures. That's the benefit. If you're developing it outside of that, wouldn't we, would the developer select what zone descriptions he'd want to use? If you wanted it to go to private residences? How would you, how would you define that?
So, John Reiner, the site, for the Mystic Education Center site, I mean, what the kind of general vision now is some buildings that are mixed use buildings, some buildings that are apartment tile, style buildings? I think the question that Jeff's trying to get at here is, do we want to necessarily set a cap on density or density bonuses? So that how we structure this based upon some of the development standards? So the fact that, all right, there is going to be a many million dollar restoration of the Pratt Building, which will then serve a, not only for the benefit of the people that are living in the Mystic Education Center property, but for the entire town. Should that give some level of density bonus to the project? Or are we looking to say, um, not necess, you know, do we want to set density limits or is it, we're looking to see what the master plan shows, but we, we got to give some direction? I mean, I, if we're focusing this on the Mystic Education Center, you know, numbers have been thrown out already of, you know, density is around 800 residential housing units on the property. You know, in that ballpark. That's a proposal that's been put out there. Do we want to start putting density limitations of certain standards, development standards are met? Or is there a different way of doing that? I, I think that's probably the broader question.
Right, so I, I would imagine that we would start with an underlying, a baseline residential density. And if you wanted to get, you know, I'm just throwing out a number. Let's say you put a cap of 25% on that. And you say you can get an additional 5% density if you provide X amount or more of affordable housing. You can get an additional up to 5% density if you have additional open space. And, you know, you just set a cap and you do as many of those as you want to, up to a limit. And, you know, for every increase in density, the community is getting something in return.
Halsey, I've wanted to speak.
Yeah, um, I agree with the, the density bonus. But I think we have a unique opportunity to establish what it is with a little extra math. We were given a proposal, not proposal, an initial concept drawing that had X number of units on it. And so what behooves us to set the base density on something much less than that? But we'll have to do some math to figure out what that would be. Figure out how much of an increase would it be to get to where they're currently proposing? And furthermore, if this is successful, if they actually go through with this entire thing and it's completely successful, and now they want to triple the size of it. Do the math on that is how far do we want to let this, let this go? So that would be our cap, our absolute cap would be the absolute thing. And we've got a model for it right now. We don't have to kind of just do it all on our own. We know what it looks like for the density they're proposing. We can come up with something much less than, that would not require any changes. And so this would be a way to, actually to factor in exactly what they're proposing right now and saying, yes, we'll give you that because you're already doing these things, but we're going to mandate you do these things. So that's where you have to figure out how to, how to state that. Within mind saying if both things, if it's not successful, then they'll just put single family houses around the outside. If it is successful, it could triple in size. And maybe we're okay with that if they continue to do wonderful things, or maybe not. I think one of the wonderful things they'd have to do would be some, as we've mentioned, lots of off-site improvements because right now we couldn't begin to bear it.
John Reiner, I think one of the things that might make it a little bit easier crafting this is because we're going to be drafting this specific to the Mystic Education Center, we can call out some of the specific design standards we're looking for, such as the complete restoration and renovation of the Pratt Building, what that does. So th- these are some things that might make it a little bit easier to get what, at what you're getting at. Hal, as well as, you know, addressing some of the concerns that we had at the staff level, what's the right way of doing this?
Michael Kane.
Uh, okay, Michael Kane here. I thought, I agree with Hal. I think that it seems as if, you know, starting from a, from a lower number and then, you know, getting something when you allow the density and it seems like there should be an upper limit just so that, you know, we know where we're ultimately going to go with this. And it doesn't become something that we weren't ever imagining. But other than that, I think that it sounds like there should be some sort of a cap. Where that is, I don't know, but it does, it does allow us to then, everything that we give up, we're getting something back for it, it would seem. That's all.
I don't see anybody else with comments right now.
Okay. So, um, we're near the end. Uh, so development standards now, and what's remaining for discussion. How much of any contributing structure should be allowed to be demolished or significantly altered? Uh, so last, last meeting, you had asked us to look into what other communities do. Uh, we found that generally there's an allowance between 10 and 25% of the existing structure to be demolished or significantly altered. We have found that you generally need to have some flexibility to modernize buildings, to make them accessible. So for example, adding elevators, stairwells, accessible entryways and so forth. And so generally that 10 to 25% range gets people there. We wanted to see if you're generally comfortable with, with that range.
Kevin.
So I am, I think, I like the high end of that range because I think it opens up and provides, you know, potential developers the ability to say, these guys really tried to work with me. So I, I like the upper part of that range.
Halsey.
I, I too like the upper part of the range. I, I might even be, maybe there needs to be two numbers. One is the overall, this just says 25% of the building. And maybe the answer is 25, you can get rid of 25% of the facade, but 75% has to remain. And maybe even a larger percentage of the building in general. Frankly, from how we think of the space, we don't care that, unless there's some wonderful things going on inside the building, we don't care that much about the inside of the building. We care about the, the nature of the street, streetscape that the building provides.
Sure. Absolutely.
Yeah, on the street, this is Jeff Pritchard, on the streetscape, should we limit it to 10%? To me, 25% is an awful lot. You're saying, taking down a quarter of the building.
Well, I don't know. Personally, I think the end result, if you just leave pieces of it up, significant pieces, you still get where you want to go. If you take a look at, you only have the one example here, but.
Oh, so you're just saying that, that, the facade, John Reiner, the facade piece that's along a main street, that's where you can turn about the 10%? The rest of it, the other two sides in the back, you're not as concerned?
And obviously, Terry.
Yeah.
Who cares?
Michael Kane.
I agree with Jeff. I think that from a public point of view, what the public sees is what we should care about. What goes beyond public view really isn't much of a concern to me. So I agree with Jeff. I think we should have a smaller percent from what the public sees, maybe a larger percent, maybe more than 25%. For what goes behind it, I really don't, you know, doesn't seem like that would matter to the, to me or to the public.
I just don't want to be a Halsey again. I just don't want to be too restrictive when it gets down to the actual physically trying to knock out how to make the building accessible and usable. And this entire building is, you know, up a flight of stairs from every, from the street level. It's a big deal to make everything accessible and put in storefronts the way this picture shows it. So that could be, it could be really rough. And I don't want to over-constrict how that can be done when the end result will still be pretty good. 10% of a facade that big, if you need to chop out little pieces, could be a lot. So I just, I think 10% is a little low. So I just, I think ten percent is a little low, certainly twenty five percent is probably too high for the facade. Pick a number in between, I'd be happy.
Twelve and a half.
There you go.
John John Reiner, this is really good direction and input that we're getting from you, I think, working with Jeff Davis, we can. Craft up something here and then I I think once you see it in front of you and then as we start going through the process, we'll. We'll have a better idea of what works.
Yeah. And so this leads us to a related question, I'm gonna skip ahead and if you don't mind and go backwards. So there's this issue of character defining features. Right, we're gonna have design standards. Um, and they have to be based on something. Uh, now, right now, for example, you have design standards for the mixed use town center. Uh, and those are more general design standards. Uh, now, given our discussion that this, uh, these regulations should apply specifically to Mystic Education Center, that does actually make. Our job easier in regard to the design standards, because we already know. Um, the specific buildings that we're trying to preserve and to support. But why want to talk a little bit about this issue of contributing, sorry, the. Uh, character defined features of the contributing structures, so. We would ask generally a developer to say, okay, what do you think, you know, lay it out, here are all the the different aspects of the the architecture. Uh, that that stand out and where do they appear on the buildings? Um, and in some cases, that's gonna be on the side of the building, that's gonna be on the back of a building where these architectural details are. Uh, and should we? A, uh, develop standards or guidelines for design that are are meant to. Uh, celebrate and support the existing characteristics of the buildings, the existing buildings. Um, and do we also want to specifically prohibit removing or altering? Um, those character defined features for any part of a contributing structure that is being maintained. I'm sorry, I felt like those are two very rambly questions, if you need me to make them more succinct, just let me know.
Maybe the developer should identify in the master plan.
Well, exactly, yes.
That might be the way to do it, let him come up and say, this is what I want.
Absolutely, that's probably the most common way to go about that.
John Reiner, in some of these, I I think the idea of having the developer define it is a good idea. Um, but also some of these might be moot points, because on the historic buildings. The developer is going to be applying for federal historic tax credits. And they have very strict standards of what they're actually able to alter on the buildings, so. I think we can still address this within our zoning regulations. But some of it might be moot, as it applies to the Mystic Education.
That's a very good point.
That, and that's for the historic buildings, we also need to, what are the. Uh, design standards or guidelines for new constructions, and that piece is still very applicable.
They have to be compatible.
Right, do we want them to be compatible to the aesthetics of the existing buildings? Or much like you have for the mixed use town center, you want design standards that are more about massing and. Uh, the height of the ground floors and how they relate to each other. Um, you know, because we we, there's a really sort of the the spectrum that we can consider for for design standards. Uh, or or again, or guidelines, and in in the past, uh, the town has been leery about. Creating standard. Having anything in zoning that is not a hard and fast standard, right? Uh, so you may, at the end of the day, want to only say, you must do this, and that is a standard, and that is what we have in the regulations. And then have a separate set of design guidelines. Um, that are, they're not part of the regulations, uh, so those are all, those are all options that we need to consider.
Halsey would like to speak.
Yeah, to to that point, I think for the, since we're looking just at the Oral School. Um, it does add a little extra flavor, just having the generality of of. Of scale and patterns, we can go a little further with that. Without having to base the design of everything new on the old building, I'm not for that either, it's going to be new structures, so let's make it new. However, there should be some features in the new structures that reflect the language of the old structure. That's about the language I would put into it, just something that is in there, sort of, that that it tightens up. What the pattern is of of scale and materials. So, well, normally they wouldn't have dreamt of using any brick. In this case, we would ask them to have some of the similar brick usage or have some. Um, lintels that are the kind of same kind of flavor to it, not as an overall design feature, but just something that's kind of recurring. Uh, in adjacent to to the old thing to reflect it, not just say compatible. I think compatible is a little too loose, by my mind, wrapping anything in glass around the old building is compatible. I think we want to do a little better than that to. To inflict on it some some more of the nature of the old buildings without overwhelming it with this. Disney scape of old buildingness.
That's gonna be a balancing act, but I think that actually gives us. Very good direction. So last slide, I know it's nine o'clock, you've all been very patient. For the design standards, uh, we had given you a potential list. Uh, two weeks ago, and you had recommended some additions to that, which we have added here, you can see in red. So we had talked already about pedestrian bicycle circulation and just clarified that that would be both. Uh, internal to the site and places offsite, uh, both to adjacent properties and to down to downtown Mystic. Uh, also design standards for public transportation, protection of habitat corridors, and deeded open space. Uh, so, you know, last question of the evening, I just wanted to see if that. Captures the range of things you're interested in, or if there's anything else that we should be considering for this first draft.
I think we need to address roadways. I don't know. Driveways to me mean that you drive in and have an in place to go, we're gonna have transportation within the, in the zone itself. So I think you should have. Behavioral circulation identified, including the the roads, stand or the standards for the roads. Because this is a large area.
Deb Jones, um, I think we did not use the term road within the development, because it implies a town road. And so I think that's why we used drives.
No, I know, but I don't think our driveway standard, I think we should using. Similar to what we have for road standards in the town.
Agreed.
And I don't care what term and.
Agreed.
Whether you call it roads, streets, and maybe you have to use a term.
Right.
Other than that, because you can't call a driveway as a. If you look in the third or second definition in the dictionary, as a road that you can drive on. But I think we have to be very careful with what we're doing here. Some of those roads and that existing there are not adequate for for use or rendition.
Sure. Right, we can, we can use those types of standards and we'll just, right.
John Reiner, so it might be that we just include, you know, vehicular circulation, you know?
That's what I do as a term.
Yes.
But we have to make sure that the.
The standards.
The standards for developing the things that vehicles pass over.
Absolutely.
But a driveway standard. There's gonna be a lot. People don't like water.
Going once, going twice.
Wow, that was an easy one.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Now we're done.
Thank you.
I will.
So we're all set, Jeff Davis, okay?
Yeah, I think so. So I I again, as as always, would I've I've been taking my notes, but if I can get your minutes whenever they're ready, that's always handy and. Yeah, we can, we can write your first draft and then come back and you can tear it apart and we'll write another draft and we'll be, we'll be closer.
Sounds good.
So we can move on to.
So just very quickly again, John Reiner, thank you all for your patience and direction through this, I know this is a tough thing to wrap our heads around. And I think this was very beneficial for all of us to get this feedback back tonight, so I appreciate it.
You made big progress.
I think.
Over a very confusing.
I think so too.
Complex issue.
Yes.
And that squiggly lines over on. The draft and our test meeting today were, that's what it was, right? Okay.
All right, well, good night, folks.
No, uh, no business, we have any new applications?
No, we do not.
Referrals? Do you have any?
We have the, just the Stonington one that's on the agenda.
I was noticing that there was a ZBA referral for some gas or used car. Place up in the Talaska Development.
It's a certificate of location.
Is, and it goes to the ZPA? Why do they are the ones that certify it?
It it bounces around, right now it's landed with the zoning board of appeals, they.
Is it just a certification?
It's a location approval without much standards by which to judge it.
But it doesn't have to come to us? That's what I was.
Right.
Wondering about. Okay, now we have the Thomas Stonington referral for a regulation text amendment for accessory dwelling units, does anyone have any concerns with that? Any hands raised?
Is any, if anybody has concerns with this Stoning referral, can you raise your hand and we can even comment?
Seeing none, seeing none, we'll move on. Report of Chair, I have no items to report. Reporter Commission, does anyone on the commission wish to report, raise your hand?
No hands raised.
Everybody's tired, reporter staff? The staff had their hands raised.
Deb Jones, we just have one item, the town manager is. Is asking all the land use commissions whether or not they could meet during the day. Anybody have any thoughts?
Any concerns, Mike, do you have any?
What, uh, just for the next? Couple of weeks, or is this like something that?
For the duration of.
The situation, yeah, no, certainly, that that I could accommodate that and make that work. You know, so long as I have a day's notice.
We have to have two.
Two days.
I'll say at least two days.
Yeah, so that that would be fine by me.
Okay, I mean, right.
Does anyone else have a concern?
Um, so I don't have a concern, I think it's a very progressive idea and we should adopt it if possible.
I cannot meet during the day.
Steve?
Is there any time, Steve, that what time you would be able to meet? Or is six the earliest for you?
Um, six, yeah, five or six, I'm good with that.
Okay, I'm I'm not sure where this will go, but thank you.
That's the only thing you have, does anyone have anything else, if nobody else raises their hand? I'll move, make a motion to adjourn, we need a second, somebody. Somebody.
A second, second, I got a second there, okay.
So a meeting is adjourned.
All right, this.